Thank you Chuck.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to ask a few questions because.
Please.
And you're talking utilities. I understand that the utility bill on that building now, the way it sits is somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 a year, correct?
Yes, sir.
So you're going to eliminate that. Let's just say you're going to cut that in half. My assumption would be, what part of the budget is that going to come out of?
Well, most of it's going to come.
Can I clarify something real quick?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
I did get all of the utility costs from the administration building. The actual parts of just what we're looking at was about $27,000, $28,000. So utilities, and that was for water, heat, and electricity. And that was for the entire building. So I just want to clarify that. I did get that information, and that is the information they gave us, about $28,000. Now, they also have the weight room that they use, the fieldhouse that they use. That was not part of it. My understanding is that they would still be paying for utilities because they're still going to be using that, along with people that would be using the armory. You know, we could work out a deal on utilities there. So just that building that we're talking about was about $28,000.
And so that would be Chuck's building? Is that the one or the old one?
Yes, that would be Chuck's building.
Okay, Chuck's building. And that's in the budget. Chuck can have additional revenues to offset the utilities. That's in the budget. The only thing that we would be responsible for would be the building that we can virtually shut down, and then the other building which was the band hall, and I don't think we'd had, you know, that's a small building over there. By the way, that's the location that Mark has had his eye on for being this fire substation.
Where the band hall is?
Yes, yes, sir. And there will be plenty of room in between the armory and the junior high.
Current structural of that building, and I'm not so much concerned about the gym, but I'm talking about the piece from the main entrance, north, back towards the armory, back towards the band hall. And we're talking about a building that the school district had to build, add-ons to the middle school, add-ons to the high school, to take all those students out because that building was no longer fit, correct, Dr. Pratt? That was no longer fit for students. What part of that building is going to be shut down, and what's your intent? Just leave it set there? You're going to knock it down?
All of it, all of it would be shut down. The only thing that would be utilized.
Are we going to tear it down?
That would be our plan. Now Wade can, he's going to speak to that on the cost.
Is there asbestos in that building?
There is.
Is there an asbestos abatement program?
Right. That would be required. That would be required. And there's no hurry to tear it down, but naturally, that's, that would be a big part of our future hopes for maybe some more opportunities to improve parks.
Air conditioning and heat conditioning in that building. I was on the school board when we hung the air conditioners on the outside walls.
Yeah.
So we'll talk about the nose of the part of the seat. So that's about how long it's been.
Yeah.
I've walked by there numerous times. I still walk by there daily. I've come by there with air conditioners running and all these kinds of things in unoccupied buildings. I'm, it's not that I'm against this. I'm more than concerned about what we're going to buy into.
Right.
I mean, the gym's a wonderful thing, but the rest of the building, and as far as the reserve center, I'm all, you know, the Jack Center, whatever you want to call it, I have a soft spot in my heart for another soldier.
Camp Jack.
Either here or there.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's the best idea since that building was the National Guard Armory in the community for a long time.
That's a home run.
But I'm very concerned about what's left of this building that's not going to be utilized, primarily. How many times has it been broken into in, let's say, the last six months? How many times has somebody stole power out of the building to run their camper trailer in the parking lot of junior high school? Okay? I come by there several times a day, and I see windows that are tore out because the homeless in our community went inside, and they stayed there. It's not the thought of buying this thing, it's not the thought of, we're not in a big rush, but it's the thought of, how long is it going to be before we knock, knock pieces down? We don't want anymore to stop this problem that's contributing down there.
Wade, do you want to speak to that on the teardown?
And what's going to be torn down?
Simply the old part.
Define old part.
The old part, what's going to stay is the gym and everything directly west of it. That would have been the add-on in the mid-'90s.
The last add-on was good.
Yes, that's all clean.
I want to remind council that everyone, that cost the district $2 million at the time it was constructed.
Two million?
I was there.
That cost too many, plus the gym.
Plus the gym, whatever that's worth.
And we do need to tear it down. There, there are some opportunities going forward with some improvements to parks. I don't want to say the word community center, but part of the things I think we offered last year can fit over there really well. So if we take something back to the community, we will, tearing that down would be part of that, part of what we propose. Now, if it's not, we'll figure out a way to ma, not maintain it. We can't. We have to secure it and then tear it down at a later date. And, yes, sir, Floyd.
What's it going to cost to tear it down?
Wade says 350, 350,000. What's yours? Did you have a number?
No.
Dr. Pratt?
I talked to, I talked to a local contractor. Yeah, we're looking in that 350 range. 380 is what they're telling me based off of what, you know, what we know about the asbestos in the building. That will be the main driver of the cost would be the asbestos abatement.
So we're going to get 50,000 for it and pay 380,000 to tear it down until we have 430,000 invested, would you say?
We would.
Yeah.
Or, you know, one of the things that I think that's backed into the price, the district, and I don't remember the price value.
1.8.
Yeah, 1.8. And I told them, I told Dr. Pratt at the time, get somebody to buy it for 1.8, and it wasn't going to happen. The school district, and Dr. Pratt certainly speaks to this, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, and I will speak for the board, but I think they saw this as if they could have got a bid at 400,000 or 500,000, they would have taken it. One of the issues is the mayor pointed out, and Mr. Boswell is well aware of, you have to maintain that building as though you're going to put students in it tomorrow. And the state is the one that governs that. So it's, you know, while the fire marshal and inspectors and other people are there, you've got state oversight keeping that facility, and that's one of the reasons that the cost is, is so high on a monthly basis. And it's not being used. And if you're good stewards of the public's money, which I will say, I've said it in here, I am humbled to serve with the members of this council and this administration. But I can tell you, I've never experienced the responsible people that served the current Harrison School District with people who have been on that board. They have a preference. Since we didn't get any real, what you would call substantial bids, they, they felt that the city might be able to take advantage of being the city organization, the civic organization, rather than the school, and be able to do something with this and have a contiguous piece of property that is already part of that. Had they have entertained another offer at some point, we never got a real good amount of offer. And the superintendent has been instructed to find a way to make use of that building, and when I say this, for the general public. It's not, you know, obviously, if the district gets 1.8 million dollars, we could use that money in other ways. But it's time that that property move forward for some use in the general public at this. Now, the thing that excited me the most of anything, and Mr. Boswell, he says he has a soft heart for veterans and a fellow soldier, I was absolutely blown away that we can use that armory for that purpose and see the district's not able to do that, believe it or not. We're, we have to maintain that for students and not for veterans. So, you know, in the end, this is, as a citizen, as not a council member or a school board's president, as just a citizen, I see my money going from one pocket to the other. And whether that's a purchase price of this, and somebody else tear it down, or we tear it down and we recoup that cost, it's the same. Now, that being said, we, we instructed the superintendent schools to enter into a contract with the, he can't do this with this. And we said, we, the, I'll speak for the board in this manner. They instructed him to go forward. We didn't have any viable offers. I have received some calls today of possible interest, but I've told them, there's a contract, and we, somebody should have come before, before. It's been around a year.
Yeah, a year now.
We had no viable offers. And the district said it's time to move forward.
What I'd, what I'd like to see happen if we could tonight, if, this right now would be in Joel's committee also. If it could, if you could move it on, and maybe the council and all of us could tour it, you haven't toured it, you need to, and take a look at the facility.
It's been a few years, hasn't it, Joel?
And we don't need to be in any hurry to do this.
64 years ago.
Wow.
I joined the National Guard in that era.
Really? There you go. You got another one.
So I know they are. I'd like to tour it.
The high school was built in, like, '51 or '57?
Yeah.
21?
Yeah.
Quick question. On, on the roof repair, if, if you tear down the building, there will be no necessity in repairing the roof, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah. No roof repair on that part. Would you want to address the roof repair? There's been a question about that. And Dr. Pratt, thank you for working with us on this project. You've been very good to work with.
Great questions tonight, and thanks for letting me be here. A couple of things you need to know. We use Harness Roofing as our roofing contractor here in town, and they make an annual inspection of all of our facilities. So let me, let me share with you the latest, and I'll give you the dates. Harness Roofing analysis of the junior high new portion, new portion, not the 1951 building, but the new portion was an A grade, which means roofing repair would not be needed at least for 10 years. So that's very good news. That, they feel like the roof on the gym and the new portion is very solid, okay? The, I'll, I'll speak to the armory. The band hall, there's a storage building there that was not an analysis of, and I will tell you, it's not very good. And we've talked about that, the mayor and I have. And then also the 1951 building. The big, the big piece there is the analysis from Harness Roofing was approximately 15,000 to 22,000 total, but the big piece is the 1951 portion, back to the older portion. The scrupers on the top of the roof, it has a gravel roof, has scrupers that need, has some flashing damage, and they need to be repaired. And there's a little bit of water leak that runs down the walls in that older portion. But again, not very severe. They feel pretty good about the armory cafeteria, whichever way you want to call it, and some of those older buildings, but they do not see a big damaged roof in that older portion. So just wanted to update you. I'll take any other questions.
The older portion, you probably know who I am, not Floyd Baltimore. I designed a Lexo system that served all those air conditioners we put in.
God bless you.
And I designed, I inspected all the air conditioners when it was done, and so I know when it was done, but there's a lot of copper on that roof in those conduits. And a lot of, and that, that's kind of inhibit the ability to put a roof down, because I was up there on that roof when it was being put installed, and it's pretty, pretty intensive as far as conduits run on that roof.
Yep. Yes, sir.
And the other thing about, when you talk about separating out buildings, the way that, the way energy measures, electricity being used, somebody needs to get energy down there to make sure you can separate those buildings out like the old building and the other portions like you think you can, to make sure that that's feasible and put out a lot of cost.
Yeah, I think Wade Phillips and Luke and my business manager Shannon Lovelace has looked over the meters. We, we're charged by meter, and I think we can get that worked out pretty well.
Mark might be able to help you out.
Yeah, Mark does help us out quite a bit, yes, sir. What other questions might the council have for the superintendent? I, I think my only statement is, I'm hoping that we can find a win-win for our community. And the property, the, the good of this is it's the entire property, and it's not chunked out where we're sell the gym and we're left with the 1951 building just to turn into dismal repair, and we don't want that in our community.
So that includes the football field?
Yes, sir.
The fieldhouse on the south end of the football field?
No, the field, it does include that, but we've allowed them to keep it for a while. He needs a transition period for that. And they also, this will include, on the addendum, it'll include five years free use of a softball field, Chuck?
Softball, baseball.
Softball, baseball.
They won't charge them to use it.
And so five years transition period. Dr. Pratt was hoping he could do that sooner, and Chuck was really hoping. But yeah, that includes the field, the fieldhouse, everything. We own, as you know, we own the parking lot right now, and maybe a couple.
What about the lights at the football stadium?
Well, they would be ours.
They're wooden poles. They're, they're older than Moses.
We would probably have to get those inspected in the next inspection we have before December 2021.
Yeah, not to interrupt, but I believe Chris Pratt had those checked.
Well, I called him today at 3:00, and he said he doesn't think they inspected those.
Okay.
Since y'all weren't, they weren't in use, so.
Okay.
But yes, they are in use. They've been in use all fall.
They've been coming on?
For 6:30 football practices by the junior high school.
Oh.
Trust me, that's the bus driver, I would see him every morning.
We'll have to work with the school.
I sit on top of those poles, named those lights on the field side. Now, we told.
And there will be things like that, Bill, I'm sure.
We have another inspection before the end of 2021, so we could have those inspected.
Yeah, and one more thing to add on to Mr. Magnus. The $84,000 a year to $100,000 a year we spend on those buildings is insurance, electricity, utility, repairing air conditioners, contract with Harness Roofing, all those pieces to keep them to the level that the state requires the school district to maintain at all times. So it's not just utilities, it's more than that.
It's cost.
Cost.
Thank you. And if we do move this on, I don't want to look at, this is not going to be an ordinance, it's going to require a resolution, but I, it needs to go longer than next week.
Well, absolutely.
So I would like to.
Well, it, it needs to go longer than next week. You need public comment both through the school district.
Sure.
And the city council.
How long is the offer good for that we've made at the school district?
It is, yeah, I was going to say.
To what?
I'll let Dr. Pratt, I'll send the realtor discuss that.
Well, I say that because of what you said earlier, because there's interest being shown, and all of a sudden, you know, it's like, well.
It's, it's good until the city council approves it. That's, that's the clause that determines.
With entries.
With entries. If, if the, if, if council doesn't want to approve it, then, then at some point, somebody's got to perfect. The city, I mean, the school district wants to mitigate their monthly cost. I'll be, be really honest with you.
I understand. I mean, I understand, look, my point is this.
Right.
It's like anything else that has to do with real estate, there is a drop dead date that the offer is no longer good on the table.
I think it was good faith on behalf of the board to say, hey, we haven't got an offer, nobody's really been interested. If somebody comes back after this, it's going to be, hey, you should have been talking since it's been on the market for a year and a half. We have found a possible buyer that helps the community, but if the city has to wait a year, they can't, there's a, an obligation, a fiduciary obligation of the board to take the best offer. They haven't gotten it. Nobody's come up with, as I say, nobody's brought cash to the table.
So what it, what it asked here is, you know, put up a shut-off.
Well, and at some point.
That's what it manipulated.
That, that's what matters.
From a legal perspective, I mean, it's a conditional offer of acceptance by the council. So until, it doesn't necessarily have an expiration date, it's just simply conditional. It's if, if, if council approves. So I don't think up until a point the council actually approves it, there's really anything to act on. It's more of a kind of memorandum of understanding or an intention to make an offer, that type of thing.
And if, if the mayor and the, and the superintendent say, hey, it looks like this is not going to work out for whatever reason that is, then.
Sure.
He's got to come back to the board and say, what do you guys want to do? I don't know if they're going to be doing this or not. And that's where, you know, it would be disappointing, again, I'm speaking on behalf of board members, and I feel a little bit untrustworthy in that, but I think they trust me enough to speak on their behalf in this regard. They really were excited about the opportunity for the city to get it.
Get it here. I think the community is going to be excited, too.
So in other words, they said, well, we can tear it down and then charge somebody 500, you know, prices of 500,000 and see if we got it, but hey, this works out.
So are we going to get into anything, Dr. Pratt, in regard to the fact that we're purchasing a facility built by taxpayers, much like we looked at when we dealt with the North Arkansas College building downtown? Is there anything that's going to catch us?
That's a great question.
Very good, yeah.
That's a great question. I'm going to come to the mic, so make sure everybody hears it. Number one, it's a little bit different than North Arkansas College. We work through a, the division of public academic facilities, and I have a letter from the division indicating that the school district has, is free and clear to sell the property at any price necessary to offload the property, whatever they feel is best, whatever the Board of Education. So there's not the requirement of a bid, a big public bid hearing type system. It can go in just like selling a regular piece of property. So we're free and clear of all the junior high to do that in whatever we feel is the best manner.
And he can't speak to this, but I can. I think the board was hoping that when the president came back for 1.8 million dollars, and we were literally chuckling about it, laughing about it. I mean, sure, you know, if you get 1.8, that's great. We were actually thinking that we, you know, we might get an offer of 500,000. Wouldn't that get an offer? I mean, that's prime property in Harrison, Arkansas, right on the creek, next to the, the park and the soccer complex.
$350,000 to tear it down.
Yeah, but again, if, if you pay, if you pay 750, let's say you pay 700,000 and put 350 in it, they start tearing it down, you got a million 50, right? Well, if you're paying 50, and you put 350 and tear it down, you have 400,000 in that.
Other side of it is, I live in that neighborhood. I'm tired of looking at it. I'm, no, I'm cut, I'm tired of looking at it.
Well, the mayor and I have had a joke with the clean premises.
Because it is, quite honestly, it is an embarrassment.
Sure.
To Seven South, and I know that it falls in the mayor's thoughts about the work going on at Dogpatch. People are going to go buy that all the time, and the last thing they want to do is look at something, we want to show them something embarrassing of the community.
That's right.
It'd be great if that facility could be repurposed, the older part. I don't see how it can be at this point. And then, you know, the, there's a legacy there. That gymnasium has a history to it. You have people that will come up here and say, the floor is gives, and you know what's under the floor.
I know, I know where it gives.
Yeah, and there's a history with that spring-loaded floor that you don't see in facilities built anymore. And the, the fact that that $2 million addition was put on, there's so many good aspects to this that, again, I think the board was saying, and if you look at their faces and hear them, they kind of, you know, they got a warm feeling to think, well, maybe that facility is going to be used for something, that our same people are going to use this, the gymnasium. You know, kids that wouldn't be using it for school are now using it for after school, rather than a business putting it in and saying this or that about it. Again, if we, we, we were hoping to get, I was just praying that we'd get a $500,000 offer or something, or even somebody would approach us and say, you tear it down, we'll give you 500,000. We haven't got any of that. We've been no real viable offers, short of one that did come up with cash, right?
Correct.
So I'll, I'll keep my mouth shut. It's 10:00.
Okay.
It's safer.
Joel, you want to move it on?
Let me, can I make?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, please.
When you make that presentation, can you, because most people aren't, they don't understand what portion of the building you're talking about tearing down. Can you get some kind of graph to kind of show?
Sure.
Where it's going to be?
Sure. Wade probably has that, but he'll have it by next week.
I think that's real important.
Yeah. Yeah, no, absolutely. Absolutely. I've got one on my phone, but.
Include, you know, not only that, but including the old concession stand. You could tear that down.
Right.
The old field, or, yeah, I guess the old fieldhouse next to the concession stand. Tear that down.
That's a visitor's dressing room.
Well, it wasn't when I moved here, that was the home team dressing.
Yeah, no, but I mean, when I was presenting the football game.
That's true. That was, Floyd, you're right. You're exactly right.
So we have the same committee that voted before.
I need a motion.
I move that we take it on to the city council.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Need a letter?
Up or down?
Up or down? A vote?
All in favor?
All right.
Yes.
Who's opposed? Okay. We'll come on to city council.
Council.
Yeah, good deal.
Might I, might I take one last comment?
Yeah.
I'm going to embarrass him. And what you all understand, we are blessed with multiple people in this community. I mean, our, from our chiefs, everybody works for the city, and our, our teachers are absolutely fantastic. He is a fantastic find for us. He has become the love in Harrison, Arkansas, and he's doing a fantastic job.
The love?
Yes, he's the love.
Stu. I agree. I agree.
He's never liked that when I drive a school bus by him.
Yeah, well, that's different. Yeah, but you're driving a school bus.
That's true. He signs the check, so never mind.
Well, nobody in this world is perfect. He's doing a fantastic job as a superintendent school.
We have the leaf pickup coming up on the 30th, and December meeting, I think we would like to recommend that we do something similar.
Why don't we do it like next month, like we did this month?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. Do you guys have a calendar, Jeff?
We've got one right there.
What are we looking at for December?
Have to be the 10th and the 17th.
Okay. That sounds good to me. Is that good to you all?
The 2nd and 3rd, Thursdays.
Make a motion for changing the calendar.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we're going to vote on it next week.
Right.
Next week, we'll vote on it next week. Thank you. We'll move it on.
Mr. Mayor, don't need to interrupt, but I've got some advice from both Wade and Grant on the two items that we.
That's right.
We moved through. We just need to touch on them quickly. One of them is the rezoning for 214 West Ridge. Wade, can you speak on that quickly?
Yeah, it's a simple rezone from R3 Medium Ventsy Residential to RZL Zero Lot Line Residential. It went to a public hearing and planning commission back in September with, uh, recommendation to board it to council for approval. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Uh, I, I would, uh, consider a motion to move it to full council.
I would make that motion, second.
Have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's done. Street sweeper grant, Wade?
Yeah, uh, we have put in the budget to purchase a new street sweeper next year. Uh, we've worked with , uh, North West Arkansas Economic Development District to apply for a grant that would run up to thirty-six thousand dollars of the cost of that street sweeper. We just need a resolution, uh, saying you'll lend us a pop for it.
What's the cost on the street sweeper?
Uh, it's estimated around now between two forty, two hundred and forty and two hundred and fifty thousand.
Tear a building down with that?
Never know. We also have a balanced budget, and usually we're two hundred in the red.
That's true.
So we might have some money next year.
Uh, I will consider a motion to move the, uh, request for the grant resolution to full council.
I'll make it.
A motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's it, Mr. Mayor?
Good, thank you.
That takes care of the business.
Yeah, thank you. I want to mention two things. Uh, I, I don't, I don't know how to say this because I almost get upset when I talk about it, and I can't. Uh, COVID, COVID is out of control right now in Boone County. In Boone County, we're going to be one of the top counties in, if, if we don't change something soon. We had thirty-eight new cases today. Thirty-eight? Wow. And what, and what's unfortunate, we can prevent a lot of this. So I, I.
So what is the health department telling us to do?
Same thing they've always told us. I mean, it, and, and that's what's simple. It's the same thing that we've been told all along. It's just, we are not doing it, folks. We are not doing it. I was in the parade the other day. How many people were there? There might have been a hundred. Myself and a ninety-five year old guy had a mask on, and those were older people. They're just, and, and I don't think there's anything we can say that's going to change their mind.
But at the ceremony, there was a lot of masks, wasn't there?
There were, there were. It changed, I, I don't, it was a different group. Uh, because in the, uh, when we were gathered over there, there wasn't hardly any.
No.
Uh, and I, I just, folks, it's not, and it's not a freedom thing. I mean, you've got the freedom not to, but we're asking you to please, please, consider that. Stay away from people. You know, it's just, uh, on and on, and I know we got Thanksgiving coming up. And you know what that's going to involve? I know it's going to. I wish we would have started in the beginning from sixteen to forty and given them all COVID. Everybody sixteen to forty, two weeks, and now you're out and everything's good, but we didn't. So, um, really, folks, I, I see this, uh, I can't, nothing is more important than that right now. Did, were you saying something, Wade? It sounded like you're, okay. The other thing I want to, I want to say, Linda?
I wanted to say, um, I don't know if it's misleading because we say when you're outside that maybe you don't have a mask. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I know that when you're any type of close proximity or even downwind from somebody that might be six feet or fifteen feet or twenty, I would suspect that maybe you should wear a mask. Um, you think that, I'm asking you, do you think it's misleading because like, let's give your parade an example, that they were outside, or they felt like that they didn't have to wear a mask?
Could be.
Maybe we need to change our message. I agree with you. And now, because the CDC's come out and said, especially, you know, like the cloth homemade masks that we have, that it actually protects yourself so well. Remember at first it was, it protects the other person and not yourself so much, and it was really the study off of those, uh, medical masks, and of course they're easier to breathe out. But, you know, when we wear the cloth mask, it does protect the person wearing the mask a lot more than they first suspected. But maybe we need to just change our message. I'm just asking and throwing it out there.
Can I, can I offer something else?
Yeah, please.
I, I am personally still against mandating masks. But I can't believe that people can't be responsible, and maybe it's the same thing going back to the entertainment district, maybe they can't be. But can we get like some TSAs or something on the radio about people that, uh, that the mayor, uh, the superintendent of schools, maybe, uh, the head of the, uh, college, even, uh, some celebrities that are willing to do something on the radio and say, with, with the Harrison, Arkansas, make it, make it a point. You know, I'm telling the people in Harrison, Arkansas, I want you to wear a mask when you're out and protect the general public. I don't wear this for me. I wear this for her.
Thank you.
I wear this for him. I wear this for him. I don't wear this for me.
We've been battling this for seven months right now.
And if you're a responsible individual, you need to wear this to protect other people.
Forty, forty people have died. Forty. And I know everybody in here knows somebody that's died.
Well, I just, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm just saying that and it's not making any difference. I think somebody needs to do something.
People will not be responsible. If they would be, they'd obey the street law.
Well, but also, if they're reminded by the right people, maybe they will. Maybe it'll shake them up a little bit.
Maybe they're creatures or something. Yeah, I mean, I don't know where they're going to congregate if they're not getting that.
Yeah, maybe you go to each of the churches and say, hey, everybody needs to, you need to go out and wear your mask.
Yeah, Bob Largent.
The Arkansas Center for Health Improvement at five P M. this afternoon issued a new strategy endorsed by the governor, uh, about the Thanksgiving holidays and COVID-nineteen. I'm not sure if you get that. I think there are some in the city that do. Uh, A C H I is the governing body for the state of Arkansas, not the health department. And they've issued very specific recommendations for families and Thanksgivings and gatherings. I strongly encourage that the city take that as the chamber has already done, post it on social media, and make it as widely available as possible. It's Terry.
Good, good. Yeah, we know that and Christmas and, oh my gosh, and we're all cooped up. Uh, hey, let's end on something really positive. Let's give them an insight to what we're working on for the junior high. Over at the junior high parking lot, you've got a group, and the group is basically the same group, department heads minus, uh, public safety. And, uh, we, uh, are going to try to put on a drive-in movie in the parking lot. And we have the equipment, we have the screen, uh, we have an engineer and a half. Wade's the engineer, Jeff's the half. And, uh, we have Chuck and Luke, and we've been planning this for a couple of weeks, and we think we've got it figured out. So we'll hopefully get it announced soon. I know some people will see it tonight. But that is a perfect location for at least a temporary drive-in movie, uh, during COVID. We'll see how, how it works. Yeah, how about that, Linda?
I love it.
Good. All right, guys. That's all I have. How about you?
Can we go home?
You, I'm waiting on you. You look good in that mask, by the way. You look good in that mask. Thank you all. I know it's been a long night. Thank you all very much.